All right. Now call the special budget meeting, budget workshop to order at 5:00 PM. Please rise for invocation.
Pledge of allegiance.
Stand with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom tonight. Father, we ask that your will be done in this meeting. Father, ask that you bless each and every person here. Father, ask that you lead and direct us. Father, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. You'll please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm number four, fiscal year 2324, water sewer fund draft budget. Melody?
So, we were going to let Denise start out. We missed something on the agenda. She's got some updated information for the salaries that you all had requested.
Go ahead, Denise.
Okay, so council had shared that they wanted to see a layout of what it would look like to give salary increases to our salary exempt and non-exempt employees that aren't part of the unions for the grade and step tables.
Mm-hmm.
I sent two different ones. The first one was an example of just a, a shared pie, right? Based on performance and proration. Everybody gets a piece of the pie that aren't on probation. And that's, that's a, that's a good diagram, but it can be skewed because then you're going to end up with some employees getting 10% increases, 11%, 12%, and others getting 2%. The second option is a straight merit increase for anyone who would meet expectations or exceeds expectations. It's a lot simpler format. Thank you, sorry.
Go ahead.
It's a lot simpler format, and it's just a straight 3.5% merit increase. Now, that's a different increase than the 3% COLA. So overall, it would be a 6.5 COLA and merit for anybody who meets those expectations. And then, if we go that route, then it leaves an extra 8,000 or so out of the 40,000, which I made a recommendation on there. If we want to get Chief Marcy up to speed with where he should be or closer, then that extra eight could be used to balance his salary out some, so.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
So this was based off a premise of a $40,000 spend, and that $40,000 number came from a potential, if you want to describe that again?
It was an annexation agreement with South State, South Florida State College, but it is a no-end agreement, and I sent it to Jerry. I don't know, Jerry, if you've had time to look at it, but there's no end to it, and it's just to pay the, the franchise fees.
Okay. So at this point in time, that extra 40,000 does not exist?
Correct.
Okay.
I think it may exist as of Friday.
Okay. Can you elaborate as to why on Friday, or is there a resolution coming, or what?
Well, there was an employee terminated, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we're in a mood to replace him, that position anytime soon, so it's more than 40,000 plus benefits.
I see what you're saying. Jerry, had you looked at this agreement yet, or not?
No, I haven't. I haven't had a chance to.
So it's described, there's no end date in that resolution? Is it a resolution?
It's an agreement, annexation agreement.
Annexation agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So is it likely that we are actually refunding them their franchise fees for all their utilities? Is it likely that that would be a thing, that that would continue?
It's likely.
Okay.
If that's in the contract.
Okay. All right. It's not necessarily something that we have to do anything with right this minute, right? This is all just for information until we get to our final budget?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Is there any further questions on this management staff increase option? Seeing none, we will move on. Denise, you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Melody, you're up.
Okay, so we have, I don't know, you can bring that up, ma'am?
Page three.
So we have our water sewer fund budget for you this evening. If you look at page two of the presentation, this is the budget summary, which shows before any capital, the water sewer fund will make 1.2 million dollars. With any capital and grants coming out, we're actually going to take about 8.8 million out of reserves. So, slide number three, this just shows your total revenues for the water wastewater fund, 6.6 million. Which is an increase of 321,000 dollars over last year. Slide number five just shows the percentage of your, water is 56% of your revenues, and wastewater is 44%. Water revenues can contain several different line items, so they total 3.7 million. Your regular revenue from water charges is budgeted at 2.3 million, which is an increase of 20,000. Your irrigation, we're on page eight, if you guys are following along in there, irrigation revenue is budgeted at 76,000, or an increase of 4,000. Sebring Ridge revenues are budgeted at 300,000, which is the same as last year. Crystal Lake revenue is budgeted at 100,000, it's an increase of 25,000.
Any idea what?
No, I've got the girls looking into that. I'm not sure what, but the, you know, looking at what was posted in the general ledger. It's quite a bit more than last year. And I'll have an answer to that when I, at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Lake Damon revenue is budgeted at 75,000, it's the same as last year. Reconnection fees is budgeted at 80,000, that's a decrease of 10,000. Hydrant and sprinkler revenue is budgeted at 12,000, it's the same as last year. Water tapping fees budgeted at 40,000, it's a $7,000 increase. Water impact fees are budgeted at 76,000, it's the same as last year. Water interest is budgeted at 653,000, it's an increase of 253,000. Since we opened up that money market account, we've earned over a million dollars in interest in a year, yeah.
You know what the interest rate is?
I'm sorry?
What is the interest rate?
It's like, right now, it fluctuates. I think it's 5.14 right now, but it was as high as 5.29.
Is that a higher jumbo rate because of the amount that's in there, or is that the normal rate?
It's the normal rate.
At the state?
It's at, it's at South State Bank.
Okay. Thank you.
Water miscellaneous revenues is budgeted at 10,000, it's the same as last year. Your wastewater revenues contain several categories as well, and we are budgeted at 2.88 million. Regular sewer revenue is budgeted at 1.8 million, 700, I mean, 70,000 dollars, which is a 70,000 dollar increase. Septage revenue is budgeted at 680,000, same as last year. Crystal Lake sewer is budgeted at 140,000, same as last year. Lake Damon sewer is budgeted at 40,000, same as last year. Penalties is budgeted at 100,000, which is a decrease of 45,000. People are just paying their bills on time, I guess.
Right.
Sewer tapping fees is budgeted at 7500, it's a 2500 dollar increase. Sewer impact fees is budgeted at 35,000, same as last year. Miscellaneous income is budgeted at 7500, same as last year. And that's your revenues. So your water and wastewater fund expenses make up four different categories, and it's budgeted at 4,689,320 dollars. And we also have the expense of the return on investment that gets transferred to the general fund. Utility billing services expenses are budgeted at 478,210 dollars. It's an increase of 25,010 dollars. And most of that is directly related to personnel costs. Wastewater services expenses are budgeted at 1,593,940. It's an increase of 182,410 dollars. And 61 of that is directly related to all the personnel costs going up. And then I'm going to let Jason take over on your, the other expenses, Jason. Your professional services increased 100,000.
Okay, so the professional services, we're just, we have many more things in front of us as far as upgrades to the system, compliance requirements that are out there. So it's going to be assistance with FDIP, with our, the lead and copper reports. There's also another report for INI that we have to look at for inflow and infiltration into our wastewater system. We also have to do some additional reporting on our, our bypass pumping systems that are in our, our lift stations. So there's, there's many different costs that are attributed to professional services from the, the different mandates that are coming down from Tallahassee.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, water services expenses are budgeted at 2,443,760 dollars. It's a decrease of 329,930, and that is directly related to, we had 400,000 dollars budgeted for meters, but it's now, there's a new state statute that those have got to be capital outlay. So that's moved into the CIP. So personnel costs increased 20,260 dollars. And there really wasn't any big changes that you made, I don't think.
No. One of the primary things that we, we were doing on the personnel side, and we'll go over this a little bit later on, when we do the presentation, we were putting up, one of our employees that is a C and D, is actually working, doing like our store room. He was injured in, on the job, and then he went to store room, but has a wealth of knowledge. And since he knows where everything's at, and he's really good at that, I needed a, a good right-of-way coordinator to start coordinating the different utilities and everything that's coming in. So, very mild increase. It would take him up to basically the, the foreman level pay, which he's close to it anyways, and with the revenue that we're receiving right now from, from the right-of-way permits that we've been processing since he's been in, and since we've had a, a good system going, it'll likely, more than, than pay for, you know, come back. It's, I know it doesn't attribute to that line item, but we're, we're going to capture the cost so we can see what our right-of-way program brings in. We also, we get plenty of funding that, for, for taxes and for franchise fees that comes to the city, and part of that is, we're putting a little bit of that back towards that person to, to maintain the right-of-way and assist us with the plans that come in front of us that we have to review and get out within a timely manner.
Excellent.
Okay, works, work center expenses are budgeted at 173,410 dollars, so 29,670 dollar increase. 17,000 of that is directly related to property insurance. I don't think you really added anything.
Insurance costs a lot.
Yeah. Yes, it does. So that's it for your expenses. Now we move on to the capital improvement. And Jason can take it away.
Is there any way we can make that screen bigger?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so we're, thank you. All right, so for the, the water meter replacement, last year, I think we're at the 500,000 dollar mark, we, we couldn't replace 500,000 dollars worth of meters, it's a large, large amount of meters, so I decreased that to, to 250,000, kind of where we're at now. Kept in line the, the water line transmission. We continue to, to move forward and replace the water lines. We have, as you know, we have plenty of two-inch water lines. We'll get into this as, as the presentation goes along. But, you know, one thing I will say, is even though we have two-inch, you pay the same amount from water from a two-inch line as you pay from a six-inch main. So that's a good thing. So it's been building revenue, but it's, it's time to step that up and fix some of the areas that we need to fix. The water treatment plant repairs and maintenance, this is, that's different, different areas that we have to, to enhance in the water treatment plant, so there's different, pumps go down all the time, so we have some that, that we need to fix where this money's going to get spent into that. It's just a, it's an ongoing thing, but it's capital because it's the expense of, of the pumps. Bell Street, Bell Street Water Plant there is 450,000 dollars. That's, my plan is, is there is no building there. There's a, it's a building, but it's very small, and we'll get that into that. I'll address that in the, the presentation. Lake Lotella Water Main, that's where the water main is kind of constricts, so we're trying to get the fire flow. There's some planned developments that are coming along, where we're trying to get that different sized water main to have it match and be consistent. So there's an area where it's constricts, so we want to get rid of that. And then Memorial Water Main, there's an area where, as you go further down, closer to, what's the road?
It's right in front of the Avon Elementary, oh, sorry, Memorial Elementary.
So right there, there's a, there's a section, so it doesn't allow us to, to loop it in, so we just want to loop that in to stabilize our pressures and also have good, we don't want to have stagnant water at the end of our, at the end of our mains. So once we get that going, we'll be in good shape.
Any idea how long that main is and, and what size it is?
When I did the, when I pulled off the aerial, it was roughly 1,100 feet, and we're going to connect a 12 to an 8, so we're going to try to be in at least an 8, probably a 10, kind of meet in the middle. We'll do some modeling to figure out what exact size we need.
Moving down to wastewater, the lift sta, the lift station rehabilitation, there's, there's two right now that we really need to work on, just some of this funding. It's, it's being spent towards the grant for the Lake, the Lake-Tolane pump station, so we're getting the grant, but we have stuff that we have to do prior to, so it's kind of hitting that line item. But we do have other pump stations that we need to fix the pumps, fix the railing, fix the bases. It's pretty significant, and some of that money goes into bypass pumping and whatnot, so we're going to do that. Lining and pipe bursting of wa, wastewater lines, we haven't really spent much out of that. We're getting ready to spend a little bit, but one of the primary reasons I'm pushing forward, an item to have a continuing services agreement that will allow us to, to have contract pricing, unit pricing for the different types of lining that we want to do, and once we have that, we have areas that are established that we want to go ahead and line, and then we'll just be able to come back here with unit pricing that's already, you know, it's going to go through the ITB process. But we'll have unit pricing, and it'll just be the pricing per the length, and then we'll be good to go. And that's something that we have to do, that's part of the INI, that's mandated by the state, the, the lining is actual, the, INI means inflow and infiltration, infiltration's under the ground, inflows coming from the top into the manholes. The generators for lift stations, that's self-explanatory, we have to, we have to add some of those to our, our lift stations. The SCADA, let me see here. Yeah, generator with, with pad and electric SCADA at the public works facility, so you want to add on that?
I presented this to y'all last year. We haven't moved forward with it, but we have done some pricing on generator units and transfer switches. Kind of got a little held up on the curbing and concrete pad, so we are looking to spend some of that this year, but worst-case scenario, we'll roll it forward. The ground penetrating rad, cart, radar cart, sorry. We are still looking to purchase one of those, the, the older models, I think roughly a 2015, and it, and it looks like it. They're very useful tools. The lift station, is that the last one? Lift station?
Lift station replacement, SRF loan grant, so this is just going in to, to have money set aside as we, as we move, as we move along, to, to make sure we're able to fund without coming and, and taking money out of our other lift stations, smaller lift station repairs. That's the goal. So we have, I think it's 38 lift stations, 38 lift stations in the city that we have to maintain, and, you know, those, those pumps go down, rails get messed up, bases, so we have to go in there. So we have two that we really have to address immediately, so that we're going to be doing that. Trencher. Okay, so on the trencher, this is just getting a trencher to assist with some of the, the laterals, if we need to run some laterals. So this isn't going to be a massive trencher, it's going to be a smaller size. The F-250 four-wheel drive diesel, that, that's basically gets you two, two trucks, so we have trucks that were designated for, for replacement, so we're going ahead and replacing those. The wastewater treatment plant upgrades that you see there, 2.98, so back in, we'll get into this again, going into the, through our presentation, but in 2022, Kim Lehorn presented a, a facility plan that was funded through the state, and it basically stated, you need to do this within zero to one year, you need to do this from zero to five years, and there were multiple items that were there. So speaking with Joseph and coming up and looking to see what we need to actually get out there and just fix parts that are, you know, bearings that are going bad, and other things within the pump station that we need to do, that's where you see that number, too, and it also includes fixing up their, getting a new building, and then utilizing their existing building more for like a lab and having a, a better setup there. There is power equipment in there, so I'm not saying to knock that down, it's just better utilize that facility and then have another building that they can use this a little bit better. The septage receiving, 1.7.
Yep. The, which will be later in the presentation as well, but the 1.7 is a new septage machine with hopefully the cost of the installation, and then also the, a new digester, which is again in the presentation, and that's, that is part of process control, so you're going to realize when this is all said and done, we have our flow coming in from the city, but we also have to deal with the septage receiving, so this is another way to do that, so.
The good, the good thing about the septage receiving is that money comes back to us real fast, so hopefully, when we go through everything, that you'll see how beneficial it is. And I think it's best we just proceed to the presentation.
Ready?
Thank you. So, this is a rate fee and schedule recommendations. I think I had, when, when was the last, Melody, when was the last time we changed rates? What was that?
2015.
2000, 2015, right? So, nine years. So the point of emphasis in this presentation, this is, we want to talk to you about increasing water distribution main sizes to, to meet fire flow requirements, to repair and upgrade a wastewater treatment plant, to meet FDIP requirements, organizational structure, and rate and fee recommendations. So this paper, I know it's, you guys have it in front of you, it's kind of a small reading, but basically, this is from AWWA that, that speaks about fire flow, and, and two of the main topics, one slide's out of order here, but if you go two, if, go two slides, please? Thank you. So, on the AWWA, which is, is mentioned in there, distribution mains are the pipelines that carry water from the transmission mains and distribute it to the customers and fire hydrants throughout the water system. Mains in residential areas should have minimum sizes of six to eight inches. So this is for fire flow standards, is what we're looking at, and also, part of getting the mains up to size is somewhat what Chief talked about a couple weeks ago, where he was mentioning the ISO ratings, and 40% of that deals with our system. So it's 50, I believe it's 50% the fire department, and 40% are actual, and then there's a bunch of others, but improving our water main distribution sizes and having the, the proper fi, the fire flow to, to meet the demand is essential in, in bringing some of those costs down. If we get it up high, high enough, then homeowners can see substantial decreases in, in what they pay for fire insurance. If you can go black, back one side, there you go, perfect. So on our water main inventory, what I really want to point out, where it says 44% are extremely undersized at two inches, that's 55 miles of two-inch water lines that we have in the city. Okay, that, that, that has no fire flow capability whatsoever, okay? It's, that's a, that's a problem, and then if you look at the three-inch and four-inch, that's another five miles. So in, in total, you know, it's, it's very, it's very undersized, okay? 49, 49%, it's not a good, not a good setup. And, and what does that do? Oh, go ahead.
Jason, I got a question. How have we been getting away with that?
So, it's a way to provide water, it's just you're not meeting fire flow. It's, people are, who need water, and if someone were to, if someone asked us to go install a two-inch water main, we can just get a trencher and go, or, you know, and, and lay a bunch of water main. It's minimal cost, it's cheap, it's a way, it's a way to get people water really fast. And, but, the thing is, is that it doesn't give good flow, and it also, I give you an understanding of flow and pressure. Flow is the amount of water that goes through the pipe. So say a pipe had 160 gallons per minute, or 100, easy number, 100 gallons per minute. If you have, someone has their irrigation that's, that's putting out 25, 30 gallons per minute, and someone else is running or running something that's, and you start, those houses start to use that water, then the flow will decrease, and then that pressure will drop. Pressure can just stay in as long as nobody's using the amount of water that you need to use, kind of like if you have your finger over a hose, it'll just build up pressure and then it'll, you know, finally go, and then as soon as you let off of it, you, you lose that water pressure. It's the, it's the same type of thing. They're getting away with it because our houses are smaller, they're not big, and some of these areas just, and probably where people would notice it most would be at night, if they were hooked up to the irrigation system, and most people are asleep at, you know, at nighttime, and they wouldn't see that pressure drop, because that's really where you would start to see issues with that. But it works, I mean, it's the same, there's no difference in the quality of water that's in between there, it's just, it's the, the quantity of water. Two inches is a decent-sized pipe, as far as, like, if it went, there's some big houses that have two-inch pipes, and a good amount of the irrigation mains are two-inch, so I, I was a little shocked when I seen it, but I do understand why it was put there. It was put there because it was a, a cheap way to get people water and get everybody on the system without having to spend a lot of money. So, some of the other mains that we have are asbestos concrete, and that, that, the pipe's good, the, the only problem is, well, one is asbestos, but the, it lasts a long time, it doesn't, by nature, it doesn't degrade, so that's why people put them in in the past, but the problem is, they crack easily, and they're also, they're made with asbestos, so we're, we're trying to get rid of them. They don't currently cause a health problem to you, but we're trying to get rid of all those pipes. Judging by the- Judging by the FRWA report that was submitted, we're, we're estimating around fifteen million dollars to upsize the two, three and four-inch mains to six-inch. It could be, it could be more, depending on the areas and, and looking and, and seeing everything, but the, the goal is, is to get going and see how much we can get done and actually come to, you know, get some really good numbers on how, how many linear feet we can replace in a year.
And my next question, Jason, is, is this something that is mandatory and we have to, you know, have by a certain date? Or we're doing this because we're helping the better of the water flow in the residence? Which one?
It's for the fire, it, the main, it's for many different reasons. Primary reason is our fire flow. We don't have the fire flow. You can't have the fire flow on a two-inch, three-inch or four-inch. You gotta have at least a six-inch water main, six to eight. Next two slides, I guess. Okay, right there. So also in our water, this is in the Bell Street Water Plant Control Room. You see it's kind of, it's, it's small. So what we're trying to do is, uh, we, we wanna get that set up to where we can have screens in front of us, have a bigger area where we can house the, the water plant personnel and the water distribution personnel. That way they can work in unison. Instead of right now, the, the current operation, it's like water and wastewater treatment people and at the wastewater treatment plant. And then at our public works facility, we have our wastewater collection and our water distribution personnel there. Well, what we wanna do is put those people together. Just gonna analogy, like a offense and defense. We wanna put the people in the same thing 'cause if there's something going on with the water, say there's a break, a, a good, a good way to figure this out or explain this. When we had the break that happened, what, two weeks ago or so? Yeah, so two weeks ago, that was lightning struck, lightning struck a, a line, went down, a pole, went down the guide wire and just put a, you know, cracked our, our PVC main that was out there. So it just split it. And when it did that, we were all trying to figure out where, what, we didn't know where it was. We just heard, I got a phone call from several council members asking about it. So then we were trying to piece together who, who, who called when, where, and just putting it together. And as we went along, Joseph, he's got great knowledge of the system. We're out riding around instantly looking for it. And um, we were, we were able to find it out in the, the orange groves, right? So, but the goal is, is that we, in the future, we would have some screens and then we would be able to see pressure and, and have hydrant caps and have it set up and be able to see what our pressures are throughout the city and see the performance of our system. Just modernizing our system. That's what, that's what we wanna to do. If you can go to the next slide. And it would kind of look like that, right? So have everything in front of them. They would be able to turn pumps on through our SCADA. And that's what some of the SCADA does, not only gives you the information, but allows you to go through and turn things on, turn things off, see, see what's going on. You can look at, you know, cameras to see if there's anybody around, you know, that, where they shouldn't be. Right now, if someone were to go into, say the Glenwood Plant and be in there looking around doing, we would have no clue. We'd have to rely on someone else to call in 'cause it's not being looked at all the time. So the goal would be to have that set up with, with the, the operators, be able to look and see what's going on. And then work in unison with, with the water distribution team and, you know, be able to see a problem hopefully before we even get the calls would be preferable.
So the control room that we have now, you just wanna remodel it so it look like that?
No, I, I've reached out to one of our engineering firms here. So when I spoke to them, my goal is, is I wanna establish a single design that would work and that I can take that design and just have one, a single architectural rendering. And then I'll just do minor modifications for the civil engineering aspect. But the, the plan would be the same that we can use at the wastewater treatment plant as we can use at the water treatment plant. That would be the goal. Cause they bu- um, Kim Lee Horn budgeted almost like eight hundred and fifty thousand. I don't need eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build something like that. I can do it much cheaper. So I, I believe that I can get that and that's where you saw that amount earlier for the four hundred and fifty thousand. I believe I can get that set up and have a room where everyone can kind of get together, have the restrooms and, and have meetings if need be and go over the, the daily plan and address any situations if need be. As well as all the electronics that would be involved. Which we're getting in other areas, just putting them into TVs to, so they can see it better. All right. Next slide. So as mentioning, the Kim Lee Horn Wastewater Treatment Facility Plan, twenty twenty-two, I didn't, that may be in the, the packet. But um, this was submitted and these were all the things that were required for us to start addressing. There is a compliance order that we have. So we have a compliance order from the state. So there's things that we have to do. We're like, not, not if we would like to do, it's that we have to do. So some of those things are outlined. And we're, we're trying to, um, you know, do that as, as quick as possible and, and do things that are the most impactful to keep the plant running. Next slide. So some of the highlights that are on there is that, um, as stated earlier, the, the clean water fund was used to create that facility plan, which is also gonna be used going forward, which I'll discuss here shortly. So the, the repairs that have been budgeted for FY twenty-five are operational repairs. It's, it's fixing, fixing the plant so that it works. It's not, it's not really making upgrades and making it look absolutely, but that's, that's not what this, this is fixing things that if we don't fix them, we're gonna have problems. And with the, with the additional requirements from the state, we're gonna have to get up there and, and um, you'll see coming up. So enhancements to meet FDEP compliance requirements for clean water will go into design and will require RFQ to be sent out to engineering firms. So that's what we're gonna do. Uh, the RFQ will get sent out and this is part of going into our grant. So here's some pretty good news. Next slide. Here's a grant that we're, we're currently in the process of trying to, trying to receive. We're in the priority for this grant. It's eleven and a half million dollar water quality improvement grant. This will make that our, our wastewater treatment plant try to get our, our phosphorus and nitrogen levels to the, to the areas where they need to be at. So hopefully, you know, we're going through the process now, trying to get that. And if we get it, then we'll be able to, to do plenty of the upgrades that we need to, to, to get our facility to meet those requirements. Next slide.
Would any of that be used for that two point nine million or totally separate?
Maybe a little bit in there, maybe. But this is largely just getting us to the, the nutrient levels. It's um, and, and just trying to expand the plant to try, you know, maybe we get it to two million, we'll see where we are. But even right now, we're struggling, we're, we're, we're permitted to one point five million gallons and at one, and under one million gallons, we're struggling to meet those compliance requirements. So the more flow that we get in, the harder it is gonna be to, to, to meet that. There's a given understanding of what we're working, not necessarily in the background, but things that we're working on. Applying for the eleven and a half million, one point four million for the, the design for the wastewater treatment plant. And, you know, with one point two million of that being forgiven. And then we also have the upgrades for the Glenwood and the Crystal Lake Plant. So we're gonna try to get that as well as the two point five two for the Lake Tulane Lift Station Replacement Project. Which we've went over that a couple of times. Next slide. So partially similar that you saw in, um, in the other water treatment plant, this is our wastewater treatment plant. So this is what it looks like there on the inside. As you can see, it's not, it's an older plant. They're, that's the only area really where they have office space to work right now. And it's pretty cramped in there with the amount of compliance and, and documents that they need to do. There's not, there's, there's one monitor off to the right-hand side that, that they use. They can look at different things and see some things with the pumps, but it, you, you need to have something that looks a little, looks better than that. Next slide. This is, uh, it's Chattanooga, but many of the, I've been to several different trainings and opportunities to go around and look at other people's stations with the newer facilities. And this is what you see when you walk in there. You get to see how, how everything's moving, you get to see your pump performance. And the goal is to try, if you, if you see an issue with a pump and seeing the output, then you can actually get out there and fix it or shut it down before it absolutely kind of destroys itself. So this is, this is essential for, for the operation of the control room to, to look and see how everything's going. Next slide. So our lab, that's our, our lab currently. And um, it's pretty cramped in there. This isn't, this isn't a lab for, we send off plenty of water samples and whatnot. This is basically telling us how our wastewater is with um, with the sludge and, and what, how it's currently like the organisms are breaking down everything. So this is what we use this stuff for, but it's, you can see it's pretty cramped. Things are kind of on top of each other. This needs to be a little more spaced out. And um, next slide.
Jason, I got a question.
Go ahead, sure.
How many, did, did that slide, how many people working there?
Normally one, um, at times two, three. Um, also it's sometimes uses a lunchroom. So somebody might be cooking sludge to get the weight of it, but also somebody eating lunch at the same time. So like you said, it's, it's very cramped. So.
What's the next slide, Joseph?
So this is just, you know, it's just adding space. You see there's, it's set up, it looks better. It's, I mean, it's a better setup. And I, and I'm not trying to, the call is, is that it would not have people eating lunch in the lab room. That, that would be a no-go. The next slide, please. I'll turn this over to Joseph. He can elaborate much better than myself.
Alrighty, um, this is a hot topic within my department. So this front page is just a kind of breakdown of what septic receiving is. It kind of gives a breakdown that the digester is shared with the citywide flows and septic hauling. Big thing to take from this, the, most of the customers within Avon Park won't be affected by this. So. Any questions? Uh, next slide.
Septage, does everyone know what septic is? So the septic is, is the trucks that come in and clean out the septic tanks that go in and drop the septic off. That's what that is. So Avon Park residents are on the collection system, the majority. So it's not gonna affect them if we adjust any rates there.
So the next slide, the uh, septic machine that you see in the picture is currently on site. It is inoperable. There's a main auger bearing that is dropped in it. And when that happened, it ripped out a couple of their components. We are still open. We're renting a replacement manual septic screen for twelve thousand a month, but our revenue is roughly fifty, so we are still making. And then the recommended replacements on the next slide. So this is just a budget line item price point. It's, we've priced two machines at this point and um, this is one that we actually have a lakeside treatment plant. So this is the Lakeside Raptor septic machine. Uh, it's not necessarily the one we have to go with, but again, it's for budget pricing. Next slide. Uh, this is just a slide of the actual septic receiving area, um, just for the general overview. Can you go to the next slide unless somebody has questions? All right, so in this picture, um, if you can see it clear enough, it's trash. Plastics, rags, anything you could think of is in there, sometimes even money. But basically what's happened with the septic machine that you've seen in the first slide on this presentation, it's too small, it's undersized, it doesn't work correctly. So what happens is your first truck works, your second truck, your third truck, your fourth truck's all going over the top and it just litters our system with trash. The big thing to take from this slide is this does increase the employee maintenance time and also the life of those pumps that you'll see on the next slide.
I have one question if you don't mind. Are we still receiving stuff of other cities and counties to run through ours?
Yes, sir. Where, there's uh, one other location to dump at, which is, I believe in Lakeland. And um, it is part of this pack, uh, presentation, I believe. So just the next slide, this slide here is um, just to kind of show the pumps and the headworks of the pumps. What to take from this is the most recent repair costs three thousand dollars. And this is frequent because of the trash that makes it through the septic machine. So we, not we, my operators are gonna unclog this pump. These two pumps probably at minimum twice a week. So. And you have to catch it before it sits there and runs for an hour and gets nice and hot and hopefully doesn't burn out. Next slide. All right, so this is where these pumps discharge. You'll see that in the middle. The other two points to take from that are just the rags. Again, septic machine should help resolve that. Next slide. All right, so this, this uh, piece of equipment in the background is our dewatering screw press. We actually have two of them. Some of the things to take from this is that the, in the last two years, we've spent almost at minimum fifty thousand dollars in just maintenance. We just replaced, on the bottom of that skid there, you see that little yellow plate, if you can all see that? Last time and it's the fourth time, I believe I wrote, it's been five thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars for repairs. And that is being ate up by sand and rags. So it, it's destroying the auger inside. Uh, the full replacement pump in, in the past two years are fifteen thousand dollars apiece and we've done two full units as well. So that helped, that got us to the fifty thousand. Uh, next slide is just uh, rags and trash that have come out of the screw press. Uh, that was in the hopper mixer flock tank. I don't know the actual term, sorry, but it's where everything mixes and it's constantly getting tangled with rags and we have to get them out of there. Cause again, it can burn up these motors and cost more money. Next slide. Next slide, that's just the final product. That is uh, that is the final product. I guess really the only reason I put it on there, that's what the septic and then also the citywide flows create. And that's what we have shipped off to the landfill. So right now we are contracted with Republic Services. Nobody's given me a um, estimate yet, but we are, we have been told that there's probably gonna be a rate increase per ton. So they did that to us, I think, two years ago. They went from about forty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars a ton. So it was a big hit, but we do budget plenty of money for that one.
And on that as well, we're gonna try to do something because if rain goes and it rains on the side of that, the rain can go down to the side and kind of get absorbed into that sludge. And then whenever we dump, that just increased volumes of water that's mixed in. So we're gonna, we're gonna purchase something to try to keep the water away, away from that sludge.
All right, next slide. Um, just areas of improvement, uh, raise dumping rates to be able to purchase equipment needed and maintain self-sufficient level of operation. Replace septic receiving machine to filter out grit, rags and grease. This will help save money on downstream equipment. New digester tank to be able to manage internal process control and septic receiving, uh, waste more efficiently. To be able to waste more efficiently. Uh, also implement rules and regulations for sludge haulers to adhere by. Next slide. Alrighty, um, so I took first quarter of this year, twenty twenty-four, and I um, took our process gallonage for those three months. And at the current six cents, what we're making, this is, I guess if y'all can, should I go through it all?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, um, in January, we made fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. In February, we made forty-seven thousand seven hundred and six. March wasn't a full month. I think it was eleven days, we made seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. I proposed fifteen cents for septic, which actually is one of the price points of the three, but I have that under septic trucks. At fifteen cents, which we would have made one hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars in January. In February, we would have made one hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five. In March, forty- and nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-five, and in March, forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
So, I'll buy the question, come on. The, um, with regard to raising the rate, you know, you're obviously over, uh, double, over doubling it. You, have you, um, considered that they might take it somewhere else? Is there any competition in the area that, because if you spend the money to replace the equipment and then raise your rates, they may, you, you may not have as much income at, at the end.
Um, we have reached out to the only other, um, receiver in the area, which was out of Lakeland, I think it was A1. Uh, we did the breakdown on a, uh, invoice from a private hauler, and they were roughly fifteen dollars, uh, sorry, fifteen cents per ton on the math we broke, on the math. So that's why we chose fifteen cents. So that was, that was to keep it fair.
And, and so, you know, we've looked at their, their rates of some of the haulers. It's like they've already implemented this into their fee schedule anyways. So they're, they're doing pretty, pretty good. And that, that's already been passed on to the, to the customers from what we've seen, so what they're making off of that. It's just we're the ones that are kind of lagging behind with what we should be charging for. You can see the headache that it, that it causes us, but we're one of the only games in town, and you can see the proposed rate, how much it would generate for, for the utility and what we need to do to help fix our, fix our plan.
I, I would also like to say we, we tried to keep this conservative. So we, I want to, I, I think the correct move would be to revise it next year.
Thanks.
Um, so yeah, next slide. Nope, one back.
One back?
Should be one back.
First slide in there.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess this one isn't in there. So, uh, the packets, let me just go on, continue?
Yeah, you can go ahead. They, they see what it is.
Alright.
So, alright, uh, in front of you, you guys have this, this sheet here? So you just go over this.
Yep. Um, proposed septic fee schedule. Um, I've highlighted three areas, pretreated industrial, septic trucks and sludge hauling. Um, each one of these has its own characteristics. Pretreated industrial, if, if done right, it's, um, almost water. So that's why it's the lowest price point. Septic trucks is the highest because it's going to be the dirtiest, is what you saw in those pictures. Uh, a lot of trash comes with that. Sludge hauling is from plants. Um, other municipalities might not have a screw press de-watering system, so they will pay to have others process it like we do.
So, so those are home. It's, uh, the current rate for pretreated industrial is five cents. The, it's, um, per, per gallon, right?
Yes.
And proposed rate is eleven cents per gallon. Septic trucks is six cents current and proposed is fifteen cents. Sludge hauling is ten cents, proposed is thirteen cents. And then a disposal penalty rate for pretreated industrial is, it's currently, we don't have one, but we're recommending twenty-two cents for people to try to do, uh, this. Go ahead, you explain a little better.
Um, we have, uh, certain levels that we can treat within our wastewater treatment plant, um, per liter. And just, um, if that, if certain areas are, sorry, let me backtrack. Um, if certain contaminants are in abundance in, in the, um, septic that's being brought into us, basically what it does is it, um, hurts the treatment plant. It can pull the air out, it can create bad samples. I mean, it, it just wreaks havoc. So, um, talking to a close municipality that was interested in it, um, they actually created, uh, these pre-treatment levels. And if we adopt that, this is actually under what they were going to charge, um, in the, the areas, the city of Lake Wales. This is under that, but what it's doing is, is, um, it's giving us the ability to charge for violators.
And that, and that's, and that's subjective, not subjective. So if they want, go over on the scale, and this could be something for someone brings, because these, these trucks, they haul all kinds of, there's some, some are greases, some are industrial waste. So whatever, that's in the truck and they didn't clean it out properly. And then they come over and then try to keep a little bit mixed in with their regular septic and then give it to us and we catch it, then, and we go over. Now we're just going to charge this rate for that because it's going to cost us that, that much to take care of it.
If they intentionally do that, it's not a crime. But that is your publicly owned treatment works, the Clean Water Act prohibits, so discharge it beyond your, your restrictions.
No. Um, and, and, you know, I don't want to be too specific, but there's, there's only one company that we take from, and we have no control over that truck when it comes. We just accept it. So, um, two of the, two of the three, oh, sorry, this is different. Um, what I'm requiring is pretreated biannual industrial pre-treatment testing required at owner's expense. So they can prove to us what they're shipping us. And then also give us the ability to, um, test it ourselves and send it to the lab. And basically all that is just to meet the testing parameters just within the treatment plant. So, um, we're just trying to get a grasp on what's actually coming in.
Does, does this require, do we need to make a change to our, uh, industrial pre-treatment, um, code? Because we have a separate code for that, you know?
All this is going to go in with the rates and fee schedules and everything, what we propose. Whatever needs to get changed, we'll put forth so, so it can be voted on.
So, um, aside from that.
I have a question. When you mentioned there's one truck that you have no control over, um, how, why is that?
Because we don't have anything in play to, to manage it. I mean, we could go and test it ourselves and then cut them off if we want, but, um, it's a hefty test. I mean.
But what is it that you need in place?
Uh, we need tests, we need to be able to test them and, and, and then also, um, basically just need to be able to test them for certain parameters and then also make them adhere by it. I mean, there's really nothing that says we can't do it. We could do it right now, but it's at our own expense. And it's our own loss.
Why don't we talk about that sometime?
Okay. So I know we're up against the clock. Do you want to table this for another, the rest of this for another meeting? Or do you just want to kind of, you have what's in front of you. We can go over, we can highlight if there's any questions. It's kind of somewhat, I would say self-explanatory, but, so the setting fees, this is for the, our meters, this is what it, it cost us. So that, that you have in front of you is what we currently charge, but we lose. If you go over, go to the next, uh, go to the next slide, please. So if you look at some of these, we're losing every time we go out there, three hundred, like what it costs with manpower and everything else, material. We're losing three hundred and forty-two dollars, uh, for a five-eighths inch. So we have our suggest, you know, our suggestions at the top that goes through and says what we should be charging. The next one, the next slide. And that's all, the, the slide before was just for proposed, like new, new homes that are coming online, that are, that are being built. That's not if you just want to change out your meter or anything like that. That's just for, for new homes. The proposed fire line fee schedule, so fire, fire service is pretty extensive for us. And it costs us, you know, and for us to do our upgrades. So these are the rates that's up there. You see there's other areas, we're just matching the rates of the other areas currently for fire line. Next slide. On this, how, how we have it set up is, is the average of customer usage is seventeen hundred and seven gallons on a thirty-day consumption. So I pulled this off the website. So someone's there by themselves, they're averaging about seventeen hundred gallons, and that's where, where the water goes throughout the day for most people. So if there were two individuals in the home, it may be, and that's his average, of course. So it'd be about thirty-four hundred gallons of water. Next slide. And just to give you, uh, understanding, we've looked at, we did a, we pulled all of the water that we sold by our customers and then took a look at it, and that's where we come up to around forty-five hundred gallons per month for the houses and throughout, uh, throughout the city. That's where we're at. So what you have in front of you with the rates, there's a proposed rate. So what do you see, what you see in front of you is that the water is basically going up, uh, five, five, we're recommending for it to go up five percent. And that'll go from, uh, currently seventeen fifty-six to, well, this, this is if you use forty-five hundred gallons. From seventeen fifty-six to eighteen forty-three, and then counting would be twenty-one seventy-eight to twenty-two eighty-six. That would be, um, that would be a total if you used that amount of, uh, water. That'd be forty-five hundred gallons. But if you were someone that was there by yourself and, you know, it was just you in the house, your water bill would actually drop. So it would go from forty ninety-two a month down to thirty-nine dollars a month. Because our, our goal is here is that we currently have a sewer flat rate, which is just twenty-eight dollars. We're proposing to drop that down to twenty-five fifty, and then anything over the three thousand gallons, then we, we, we bill it at, uh, six dollars per thousand gallons. Now how that works is every time you get your, you get your bill, say it says, it's by the thousand multiplier, say it says three fifteen, and the next time it says three eighteen, you're only going to be billed for the three thousand gallons. But as it goes along, those other numbers, say it's, you know, thirty-four hundred gallons, thirty-five hundred gallons, so all you need the next time is thirty-one hundred gallons, and you're going to go over. And the next time, even though it's in the three thousands, that number's going to take it to four. So at that point, then you would pay, uh, an additional roughly like four dollars, but if you kind of factor that over, it's, it's not that bad. So the water rates really aren't going up significantly. It's, uh, relatively minor since we haven't did it since two thousand and fifteen, but the sewer, we are trying to put a cap on that and also with how close we are to getting to capacity at our, um, at our wastewater treatment plant. Next slide.
They don't have it.
Oh, you, they don't have it?
No, it's a new one. It's what we did today.
Okay. So we can, we can, um, but you printed out for them, right?
It's all in these packets this week.
Okay. So these are some of the proposed, uh, commercial water and sewer rates. The other ones were the residential. What would you do, five?
Five percent.
So this is at five percent as well. Just run through it real fast.
Alright, um, on this slide, which you all have in front of you, is water and wastewater impact study fee that was put together by the Florida Water Association in, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty. Um, it, it shows what the fees are in the city and outside of the city limits for water and wastewater. It's recommending, okay, so on the next slide, it's, um, we put the current proposed capacity fees per ERCs. Um, I gave three options here. I, I also gave the current inside and outside, but instead of going inside, outside, we broke it down into just an average, if you will. Uh, so we have option A, which is current value of the system to maintain it, proposed value. It's a hundred percent average, and then replacement value of the system. Um, so again, I, I'm promoting the middle, which is average. With this year, the current ERC rate, we've, for the eighty-seven, um, establishments that have been built or in currently being built, uh, we've made three hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. If, with the proposed ERC rate with those eighty-seven units, we would ended up with four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. So again, I'm, I'm promoting the, the middle average. And that would be it for that.
Can you go back one slide, please? Or say, do you have the, the organizational chart up there?
That one.
Okay. So this is that org chart, how it is right now, currently, the water goes into, there's a, Joseph's, uh, utility manager, and, uh, we have one water and sewer foreman who's over all the collections. And then there's another wastewater treatment plant dual operator. He's over, uh, Jonathan Delgado, uh, senior, he's, uh, over the, the treatment plant. So our goal is, with everything that we have in front of us, we want to put the water, water distribution, uh, create another position, which is just utility, but it's not adding a position, it's just basically promoting. And we, we fully feel that the personnel that we have in there will be able to step in and wouldn't be much more than, than what they're making now. But we'll give that span of control to have the, a, a water supervisor and a sewer supervisor. That doesn't mean that they can't go back and forth and help out, but it just gives more, the responsibility, instead of shared responsibility, whenever it comes to the, the water distribution and wastewater collection system. We're also going to take, uh, one of the individuals and then modify that, that we spoke about earlier, about the right-of-way program. And, um, we're currently in there working as administrative assistant Karen. She works with us, but she also works across the board. She does water, but she does trash, she does everything else. The position that I'm proposing, with all the grants and everything else that we have in front of us, so we don't have to, you know, take all the work home with us at night. An assistant is the utility management analyst. So that would be a position that would, um, be somewhat of a, a high-level assistant that can do rate studies if need be, someone with a, a four-year degree, someone that can go out there and, and, uh, you know, when given an assignment, can, can lock in on, on that. Whereas, you know, usually I, I need to go home and just do this at night, and it gets a little bit tiring after a while. So get, get worn out. Um, next slide. Last slide, actually. So as you can see. Yeah, the last one. There it is, service enhancements. So the, the greater, the greater span of control over our organization, we want to have people assigned where they need to be. Uh, we want to put the water plant operators, uh, with the water distribution operators, and the same with the wastewater plant, with the wastewater collection. We want to have our, our right-of-way, which we currently have rolling. We just want to kind of put everything and have the person with the title to streamline plan reviews and ensure utility placement doesn't impede city utilities. We want to increase response time and minimize water service disruptions, increase revenue to fund needed repairs, address increased state compliance requirements, and prepare for population growth while lowering debt burdens. And also allow us to apply for even more grants and work, work smarter with the way we use our money and comply with the intensive grant requirements. And that's what we have for you today.
Very good. Any quick questions?
Just one quick, sorry, one quick question. Um, the wastewater plant control rooms that you want to make look better with the screens, will those be manned all the time? Or is this just eight to five, basically?
It's, uh, eight to five. I mean, we're here on, we're after hours, and we are, um, here on weekends for a set period of time. And I believe we're also looking to do, um, restructuring of the operators, which will keep somebody on the clock ten hours a day. So it, and, and attempts to lower some of the, uh, mandatory overtime.
Obviously, there was quite a bit that we skimmed over for the sake of time, but, uh, you guys could put your questions together and maybe pose them to staff in between our next meetings. I'm sure they'd be happy to answer it, or they can answer it at the next meeting. Anything else absolutely paramount to this meeting? Seeing none, that concludes our agenda. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are.
For those on Zoom, please, uh, re-log in for the next city council meeting.